The June board meeting. This is, I'm gonna call this, this is the regular June meeting of the Danville Board of Directors, today's Tuesday, June 7th. And before we go any further, we're just gonna take one moment here for a moment of silence for the, um, let's speak of the tragedy in Uvalde, Texas. There's not much seems like it's gonna happen about it, but if you just give me a moment here. And moving on. First item on the agenda is additions and changes to the agenda. The last thing we got, which is on the agenda was a seventy fund request. Past that, does anybody have any additions, changes, or deletions to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna go into a roll call, which I should have done first. My name is Clayton, I'm the Chair of the Board. We have four Board members physically present and some administrators on Zoom, so we're gonna go around the room and announce ourselves for the video. Dave?
Dave, what was your?
Molly Gleason, Clerk. We're also coming, Board Member.
And we have another one over, Tim Samborn, who's unable to join us tonight, and so we're gonna move without him. I have on the Zoom, I have the Superintendent of the Schools, Mark Tucker. I have Principal Sarah Welch on the Zoom, and Dave Schilling is present. Incoming Principal Larry Flegelman is also here. Hello, Larry, thanks for coming. And that's, and then Thomas Edgar, Student Representative. We have two other student representatives who are probably both playing ball. So. Moving on. The first, the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of, two sets of minutes, the first minutes were the minutes of May 3rd, the regular board meeting. Those were, those minutes were exhaustive and well-written. I reviewed them with Molly before, did everybody else have a chance to review them? And does anybody have any questions about them or changes? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting for Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022.
Have a motion on the table, can I get a second? Second from Melissa. Any questions about the minutes before I move forward with the vote? All in favor of approving those minutes, say aye. Motion carries. The May 6th minutes were a very short, brief, single item agenda where we did a hire, and that was on the night of the open house, and. I'm in an apron. So, those are short minutes, those are, again, everybody have a chance to look at them? May 6th minutes, I'm looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
From Melissa, thank you, Melissa. Second from Dave Toll. Any comment, anybody, anybody have anything to talk about regarding those minutes? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of approving the May 6th minutes, say aye. I as well, motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to administrative reports. The first one on the administrative report is in the packet. We got it today, it's in the pack, I know it was ready yesterday, but we got it today. So, does anybody have any questions for the Superintendent? Does the Superintendent have anything to tell us about the Superintendent's report? Mark?
Hey, um, just wanna, I just wanna touch base quickly on the PCB testing, because I put this in there, Danville is on the list of schools that are supposed to be tested, there's five of the seven schools in CCSU that are supposed to be tested for airborne PCBs. I do not have a testing date. They told me two weeks ago that they're, we're gonna start with Cabot, and I will hear from them soon. I've not heard from them about Cabot, so. I think that they, they claim that they want to get this done before the end of July, get all, all five schools in CCSU done, and then we'll go from there. I don't have any sense of what they're gonna find, whether they're gonna find anything. We'll know when they, when they do the testing, there is remediation money that was approved by the legislature. An inside source taught me how to access that money if we have to do any remediation in any of the schools. Hopefully, if we have to do any, anywhere, it will be small and manageable, but I'll keep the board apprised. First, when we get an actual date that they're gonna come into the building, and then second, you know, if they're, whatever the results are. The, the only other, there's a, I did put something on here about the Student Health Service Upgrade. And, you know, without getting into specifics, we had an opportunity yesterday at Danville to see how this is going to work. Or one of the, one of the many ways that this is going to work, because the nurse was out of the building and we needed some nurse to come in and do a medical evaluation, and we picked up the, we, Dave picked up the phone and called Molly Brock, she came over from Walden and supported the school, which is part of the plan of enhancing school-based or student health services, and so that, I think, I think that went well and was helpful that she was available and willing to come over, so. There, there are some things I'm officially taking her to the CCSU Board for approval, the week of the, or the on June 20th at the meeting, and some other things around that, so there'll be some more updates for the district boards.
I have one question for you, Mark.
Yep.
You list as an open position in Danville, a middle, middle grade math teacher, but we hired a middle grade math teacher, right?
This is an old list, because some of that's not current for elementary, so.
I got, yeah, I got this at the, I got this at the, you know, at the end of, end of May from Vanessa, it's a, you know, it's a dynamic list, so. It's possible she missed, missed an update on here.
But we only, we, we hired one middle school math teacher, so I think we have that, all these, at least we have that one covered, going into the summer, I think.
Yep.
There's not a new one, that, that hire stuck, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Same position back up, good. Anybody else have any questions for Mark? Okay, moving on, Principal's report, and I'm not here, but, Tim's not here, rather, but if Tim was here, he would say, that report's already coming late. So. I'd like, if you, if you would just give us a couple of minutes, Dave, to go through, get a couple of highlights, especially with regard to eighth grade graduation and the graduation ceremonies that are commencing.
Yeah. Let's actually start with the elementary pieces, since they are the bulk of the report.
That'd be great.
Again, we apologize if it's coming in late, but this is a tough week, I'm gonna be honest with the Board, this is a very tough week. Sarah and I have events pretty much every single day until 9:30, so I, I hear Tim's feedback via you, but also, please, you know, we ask for your grace when it comes to June.
Sure, I, yeah. Sarah, can you give us an elementary report?
Sure, one of the pieces that we're really excited to get back to is different field trips for the school, so we've had over the past couple of weeks, and in the next week, we have kids going to Echo, Montire, Boulder Beach, Polar Caves, Hardwood Trails, a couple of different groups headed to Sugar Ridge, McReynolds are hosting and have hosted a few different groups at their farm. So that's just been a great thing, because that's been something that hasn't, it's actually something I haven't experienced at Danville, because a lot of these happen in the spring, and we didn't have a spring. We haven't had a normal spring since I've started, so this, it's been great, and the kids are really enjoying those experiences. Today, we had our first elementary community meeting, I think Danielle said it was something like, the first one in eight hundred and eighteen days since March something, I forget what date she said, in 2020. So that was just really cool to see all of our preschoolers through sixth graders together, and then we tied that into our step-up day, and they got to meet the teachers that they could have for their next grade level for the next year, so. Those are the big pieces, and then we have a field day, middle school and elementary have a field day next year, and I know the PTG is helping and different other parent volunteers is helping to do a barbecue for that day, which is gonna be really great. Dave, the most, there's questions for the elementary.
Do you have any questions to the elementary school principals?
If not, upper school principal, right? One really exciting piece, and actually Abby Bartell is here, which is awesome. We formed a chapter of the National Art Honor Society and held our first induction ceremony last week with eight new members. This is a continued push toward doing things well, it's a continued push to recognize that we don't just have an art club, we have a nationally recognized group that really recognizes and promotes young artists and gets them connections outside of Danville, and so it was a really nice induction ceremony, it was it's good to see, so I really, I thank Abby for that happen. We are doing June term again, it says engaged June term, it means engage in June term for the last three days in school, June term, our purpose is a purpose-designed, single-area mini-courses that really highlight engagement, transferable skills, and fun, it's a good way to end the school year. June term varies from a week to this year, this week, this year, it's three days, simply just because of the way the schedule worked, and the extra three days of school for snow days, but I'm, we're trying to shoot for about a week. Eighth grade graduation is 6:00 PM Friday, June 10th, it's gonna be under the tent, we have a much larger tent this year than we did last year, which we're really excited about. So we don't anticipate any restrictions or need to, like, you know, dull out seats, we've given families like a block of reserved seats, and then it'll be just like graduation in the gym, there's plenty of extra room. And the high school graduation will be Saturday, June 11th. Eighth grade graduation, 6:00 PM, high school graduation, we'll start with a parade at 10:00 AM, and then graduation at 11:00 AM. The parade is something that COVID gave us that actually was a great idea. And that parade, the first year, when, you know, we had our graduation two years ago, our seniors hadn't, um, actually, that was only last year. Last year. Two years ago, we hadn't seen anybody for quite a while, and we were able to celebrate the parade. Last year, the class hadn't been together as a full class until graduation. Right as well, and this year, it just seems like a great way to continue to bring the community and, and honor our kids, so, start the parade. Softball team won quarterfinals against Northfield, and is probably about to beat Richard tonight. So, that will mean the finals game on Sunday, right for prom, just like last year. Prom is on. Any questions?
Can we get some photo and a caption put in the newspaper for the Art Honors, for the National Art Honor Society? I mean, it's quite an accomplishment.
Sure.
It deserves a recognition where everybody's gonna see it.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Katie Fickenbaum has moved to a different job, so we're not gonna see Katie anywhere, unfortunately, covering our board meetings. Andrew McGregor is taking over, I think, for now, and so
He's not here.
My, sort of, my caveat about getting some in the newspaper is stuff goes into the Cal Rec as they accept it, but we will certainly see better.
Yep, thank you.
And then, I think, Clayton, to your, to your point about the positions, these are the current open positions at Danville, at the bottom, if everybody has a copy. We have a first and second grade classroom teacher position, the design and technology instructor position, middle school social studies, a point five elementary art, a point six literacy interventionist, and then we've had several, three para, support staff resign. So Dave and I are still in the process of figuring that out, but we expect there to be some support staff positions posted shortly. The other ones are already all posted.
Okay, so this one doesn't say math interventionist, because I haven't filled this well, so.
We haven't been able to fill it, and so we've let it lapse, and we may, I might retry, try to repost it, but we've, we had interviewed and offered the position a couple of times, and people turned down.
And that was listed as a, on the Superintendent's report, that was listed as a shared position between Peachum and Danville, so.
Yeah, we were trying to get a full-time position, hopefully to recruit more people because of that, so.
Right. That's what I needed to know there. Student Services Report came in today's packet as well, did anybody have a chance to read through the Student Services Report? Does anybody have any questions about the Student Services Report? Anybody, anybody, any Board members have any questions about the Student Services Report? If you read through it this after, this afternoon or evening, and you come up with any questions, you can email Sabrina. The number was 291 across the Supervisory Union, off of 290, some of them have multiple reports that were due, that's what I read about. And she says, thank you for the learning opportunity, and off she goes. Next, I've got student reps, and like I say, I got two student reps playing ball, and I've got Thomas Edgar here, Thomas, I'm gonna turn it over to you. We received your report, but do you want to take us through some of the stuff the elementary school is doing again?
All right, that sounds good. So. All right. So the sixth and seventh grade went to nature's classroom for a week earlier in May. Had a good time. Elementary school had concerts a couple of weeks ago. And so, we're getting pretty close to the end of the year here, there's about a week left. Fifteenth, last day. And fourteenth, elementary schools having a field day to end the year.
And as you guys know, this will be, this would have been in the last meeting for Liza and Ava, but they're playing a ballgame, so both of them are gone, do you have anything to say about Liza or Ava, that you can be mentoring from them, Thomas, because you're about to be the chief, you're about to be the, um, the, the chief student rep, and you're gonna have to mentor the next person, so I hope you guys will mentor. And we'll thank Liza and Ava personally when we see them, but thank you, Liza and Ava, for your service to the students. Okay, I'm gonna move on to board business now, and the first thing on the agenda in board business is the building project. And it says we have a presentation and Q and A, but I don't know, do we actually have a presentation Q and A tonight? Mark?
I, we don't have a presentation, I guess it may be a little loose with the language there, I thought after two, having two nights of tours, this could be an opportunity to, for people who were not, who did not participate to hear thoughts, and I think we could benefit from some guidance from the Board on, what do you want to do? Now, we only scheduled two tours, but I, and I, my scheduling didn't allow me to be to either one, so I don't know, my sense is the turnout could have been better.
But I've. I think that we have some questions for the administration as well, so I think that we might bandy about some questions in and amongst the Board and the administration, and then open it up to the public to see if we can get some more questions for tonight, and maybe answer some questions. Okay, so, I, I, at my understanding of it, the way this worked for us, the Board members, was we didn't want the, we didn't want for the building tours to be board meetings, and so we didn't, we wanted to put some Board members there, but not but not a gaggle of Board members there, so we had to warn it, and then run it with, where every question came through the chair, so that people could ask them questions freely on the tour, and they could ask administrators questions freely, and the administrators that were there, and again, thank you to Dave and Sarah both for being there both times to answer the questions freely, and, and to have an easy flow of conversation, that was deeply appreciated, and I think that we had, we ended up with a lot of questions, and if anybody has any thoughts, the first time, Dave and I were at one where there were eight participants that were not that, that weren't scheduled to be there to run the tour or to be part of the tour, I think the one last night was closer to thirty.
Yeah, twenty-five, I think thirty with all of us, but twenty-five, yeah.
And so, the, the, I thought the Q and A was quite good at hours, but the presentation was quite good, so there was a lot of information that was shared with the people that would show up, so that they could see the deficiencies and the inadequacies, and when and where the work had to be done exhaustively. Does anybody on the Board have any thoughts? And in this case, this is what Rob, who's been on the committee for, for, if you have any thoughts for either one of those, I'd welcome yours as well as part of the.
But, 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 I, I, I might get an email, which I couldn't get out, because of my computer, died right in the midst of getting it sent, so, I printed, I edited out. And it's actually, it is pro option three. And, and maybe if I can hand it out.
That'd be great.
It hurts for those guys to see. But, yeah, the computer just. Died right in the midst of getting this out, so.
Thank you very much. David tries to scan it. Oh, good. Okay, so. I think what we'll do, Rob, is I think that we'll take this and we will take it under advisement, and it'll be added to the minutes, this is a lot of, this is, so for the, for everybody in the room, this is a lot of from Rob Alave to the Daniel School Board with his opinion on this, and I think we should also start accepting these letters from people. It'll be on, like, if, if he has one, you'll give one. Yeah, this will, so that's what I'm just saying.
I can take a picture and.
Yeah, this, so this will, this, we can, we can put a PDF of this on the website, and it'll attach it to the minutes, as that's the thing that happens. So, Mark, I think that some of the things that we've, that were indicated that we need from the community were, we're probably gonna be looking at needing some sort of a cost analysis for quite a few members of the public regarding what the cost would be on closing the high school. That seemed, that seems to come up a lot, and, and I think that it's a reflective to, to the idea of spending these, these costs, and then having to educate, educate out-of-town students, but the question comes up often from a lot of people, and we need to get some sort of data to make, to help people understand what we need to do, and why we need to do, and why that option, and, and the cost of that option for everybody. And I had other Board members have told me the same thing, and community members have told me the same thing, and I have some other Board members that could also tell you that. And so we're wondering if Mike, I know Mike did this recently for Cabot, and I'm hoping that we, I think that we probably need this to, to be able to illustrate to people that what sort of cost we're talking about in terms of the, the difference between operating a high school and not operating a high school for the town, and, but also how that factors into these repairs, and what has, still has to be done with regard to the repairs of the school. Okay, is anybody else, so, for, yes, sir?
Yeah, let, let me give you a little bit of context around this, about how the, the only way that you can do this analysis, and we're happy to do it, but the only way that you can do this analysis and make any sense out of it, because we, we don't have a crystal ball to see into the future, it'd be to take the current approved budget, in this case, it would be the FY23 budget, and then pretend that the high school did not exist, and back out of that budget back out of that budget, any potential savings from staff? Because you don't have a high school, you don't have grades nine to twelve. Any any projection, an estimate or projection of what it will cost to pay tuition for the students, for the Danville students who are currently in high school, not the, not the tuition students, but the Danville resident students, because they're gonna have to go to high school somewhere, and Danville will have to pay for them to go to high school, and so we can do a projection on that. And then, a reflection on what the impact is of losing the the revenue, the tuition revenue from the students from other communities that, that tuition into Danville School, because that is money that, you know, it's, I I use the number roughly eight hundred thousand dollars that comes into the coffers every year from other communities to educate their students in Danville High School, that money will go away. And then, and estimate or projection for the Danville High School students, not only what their tuition cost would be, total tuition cost would be to attend other, other high schools, but an estimate of the excess cost for those students in special education, because you have to pay the receiving school for the cost of special education over above the tuition that you pay for them to attend. So that's a that's a factor that's often overlooked, it's overlooked repeatedly in Cabot every time this comes up, and, and so there is a, there's a framework for, for breaking these numbers out, it's not a, it doesn't make any sense to do to try to do a back a napkin. It's a, it's a little tedious, it's a little time-consuming, I don't want to, they, I, I can make a commitment that we will do this work, I don't want commit to a date certain, because I haven't talked to Mike, and about what else he's working on right now, but that's something if you have some, you know, rough idea of when you would like to have it, I could start from there and tell, and talk to Mike and tell, tell you if that's even feasible. But it's not a, it's not a simple two-hour exercise.
I understand, I've been, I start with the backs of a bunch of napkins lately, trying to explain the, um, trying to explain the cost, and I get lost in the weeds myself, and then I'm getting lost in the weeds as the person trying to explain it. And so I just think that it needs to be elucidated, so that we, so that I have a document to point to.
Absolutely.
And, let's, so, I don't, I don't know what the summer looks like, Dave?
Um, and analysis was done about school choice, I've, it's back quite a, quite a few years back here, was presented to the Board that it'd be high school, it closed everything, what would you save on? And whoever did it, it was, it was very extensive, you know, the, the electricity, a percentage of, of everything that, that fell into the different buckets, and it was presented to the Board. I will go back and see if I can find it, because it is worth looking at, and then I can send it to.
That'd be great, just, any data that we have, it would be great to have to point people to.
And, and it would be to send all the high school students, and the analysis went to send them to the academy, because you know, just because it has a definitive number, and transportation was the lowest, so, it, it's worth looking at, and I will.
Yeah, I'm happy to look at that, if you send that to me, Dave.
Yep.
I don't know who did the previous analysis, so, no, Mike and I are pretty comfortable with the model that we had to construct for Cabot, but we'll take a look at this other analysis, and may, you know, if there are other thing, factors that we're not considering, we'll, we'll factor those in as well.
It's Dave Schilling? Yeah, I just wanted, before the message gets out, that this was the first thing talked about, I want to be really clear about what the conversations are out there, and also that this was, this brings up a time that was really, really divisive and painful for a lot of people. I'm lucky enough to nestle myself into four years of not having this conversation. But some people are not so lucky. The point of doing this is to get the correct numbers out there before a lot of people's backup adaptive numbers come out, when we talk about a building project. It's really, because it's, because, you know, Mark detailed, it's such a detailed process, and it's such a long process, not doing it leads to people doing a very simple calculation that's very wrong, subtracting it from the cost of a building project and saying, see, here's what it is, so. I just want to be really clear that, in the conversations I've heard about this, it's not about rekindling old fires, it's about just making sure that the building project numbers can stand alone.
I agree with you, this is a reflex, we want to run from the big number, and try to find any way to get away from the big number, but I just, it needs to be done, and I needed to bring it up, yeah, so it was on my mind.
I'm just gonna say, what I heard, what I've heard from people too, is just having a lack of information, I think it's hard to give input on three proposals that are over sixty million dollars, I think that's hard to grasp what that means for their wallet, you know, it's a, is it five thousand dollars more on their taxes, is it a thousand dollars more? And we've talked about that, but I think people are feeling at least a sense I get from people I've talked to in last night at the meeting, is that, you know, we're looking for feedback, yet I don't think they're in a place to really give opinions on those options, and it seems like we have these three options, and then now people are presenting this preschool through eight option, and even some people wanting a price on that being a new school, so that's been going around too, and there's also the option of not doing anything at all, what the costs are associated with that. So that's just, I mean, what I've heard, and I think everybody understands the need, and that's there, which is good, and people showed up at these meetings, which is really great too, that we have that much engagement, but the sense I'm getting is people really want to know those details on how is this gonna impact the taxpayers, understandably.
Sure.
And, and I want to kind of, I want to echo that and echo what Dave said too, is even though the first meeting was very, had a very small core group of people, it was a very good productive meeting, and yesterday's meeting was much bigger, and it was also very good and productive, we had a lot of really good dialogue about the why, and how things are changing, and how things have changed and evolved within education, and how does best serve our kids. One of the biggest things I heard, just to echo what Molly just said, is the town is asking for the impact on their taxes, and the, even, and they understand that initially it's gonna be an estimate, but I think they, that will really help solidify their, in their brains, what these numbers actually are.
So we can't do that, and, and this is my understanding of the situation, is we can't do that across four separate jobs, because we don't have four separate jobs architected all the way through, so we have to pick a job. All the way through. So we have to pick a job and then do a call and then have it written up and drawn and then do a cost analysis on that job and tax analysis on that job. That that's my understanding. Is that correct, Mark? Is that your understanding as well?
Well, um. I would, when we talked about this before, what I've said is that. If the direction were to. To get for firm, three or now four firm estimates. For this project. That it that that are based on any kind of meaning, you have to have a solid design to know what that design really costs. Okay? That means that you're gonna pay the architect four times. You're gonna pay for each of those designs. It's not like they can. It's not cookie cutter where they just pull out components. Um, I wasn't there last night, but I wonder if some people think, well, if you just pull the high school out of. If somebody was thinking, I'm speculating, wow, sure, let's build a new school, but let's let's pull the high school out and only build a new elementary school. It's not as simple as saying, well, we're not gonna have four four additional grades in the building. It doesn't. It it may end up simplifying the design, but but that has to be designed out and costed out. So I, you know, my sense is that the board, uh, the board does not have. The does not have the resources to pay for four designs. Which is why we're on a path to try to try to. Get to a point where there's some consensus around which of those uh options. You all wanted to pursue and settle on that and then commission a formal design that we could price out and find out if. Is it really seventy million dollars or is it eighty million dollars or is it sixty million dollars to build the real? Choice. And only then, yeah.
No, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
No, and 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 then if you know that, then that. I mean, we could, you know, we can do, we can do all kinds of estimates. Where where I'm clutching a little bit is, you know, I could probably go and talk to somebody tomorrow and say, well, you know, if we spent seventy million dollars on a new school. What would that cost? You know, what would that cost the community over thirty years to pay that back? And that would be, and that's a real rough back of the napkin estimate. But that is going to become the number that everybody is going to. Base their decision on. So, you know, I. You know, I hear a circling back around to my least favorite thing, which is premature precision. Because we don't know what the community, what the consensus in the community is, and therefore we don't know what the consensus of the board is for the direction that you want to take. And, you know, if you if you want us to start slinging estimates around, we can do that, but I think it's going to get messy real quick. And nobody's gonna and you're gonna, you're gonna. You know, if there's four options out there, you're gonna alienate, each one's gonna alienate, uh, appeal to twenty five percent of the population. And alienate the other seventy five percent and nobody's gonna know what to do.
Which is the board right now, I'll get you when I open up to the public then.
I just, I wasn't able to make the meeting, so.
So we're just the we're just we're just the board now. So I'll get you one.
Okay.
So did anybody else on the board have anything else to say? I have a few more things.
No, I just, the only thing that I would add is, as a parent who's been coming into this school for years until I took that tour. Like I was looking at this building in a very different lens and so, you know, to Mark's point too. There's probably a bigger group of people who would have liked to come in and so I don't know. Is it offering another night? Just, I don't know. Just, I think about the parents who have kids here who think they know what the the inside of the space is like and who think they know. Whether it's working well or it isn't until you come in with that critical lens. You you just don't have an appreciation for what's really going on in here.
Yeah, so I think everybody has walked away with that very same, you know. But you have to be walked through and you have to be walked through by somebody who knows and you have to walk through when it's an active school. And on the fifteenth of this month, it's not an active school anymore. And so then it becomes people box, they box up their possessions and they put them out of the way so that they can shampoo those carpets. And so they can clean up all the messes that the kids made all year and then it doesn't look the same. And so that's why they were trying to get these two, these two meetings done. Done the the for whatever, but it would be nice if we could get people to um to watch the video, to watch the minutes. And so that's what we really we have to push now. I agree with Mark that we can't do four drawings and we can't do four sets of estimates because the the capital investment. Is um is is too vast to try to do that and too time consuming to try to do that. So we're gonna have to figure out. What we want to do going forward, but this might have to go to committee before we figure it out, Mark. I'm not sure if this if we can figure it out before it goes to committee. This might have to go to committee before we figure it out. And we might have to open up some sessions to some more public and maybe show them the recordings, maybe at at every committee meeting, it starts with thirty minutes of looking at the report. And then or a building or a building tour of some of the spots and then we move on to the discussion, try to figure out what makes the most sense. Because if we had, if we had eight people at the first one and we had thirty people at the second one, we don't know for sure what. Thousands of people think. And so and what we know is, we know people are reflexively hiding from this number and it's the big sticker price. And so I don't know that we have enough information to be making a decision straight away and I don't. And I'm I have a sense of, you know, uh, of what some some people, some people think. I have a sense of what some other people think. And there's not, I don't, I don't have a lot of sense of who's in the middle. And which way they're gonna this way. So.
Yeah, I I hope, I I hope that I'm not trying to push the board to make a decision. Without appropriate input. What I'm, what I'm respectfully suggesting is that we be careful that we don't. You know, that we don't take on. That we we don't go in four different directions at once and end up satisfying nobody. I mean, somewhere in this is a decision about. What do you, you know, what what is a appropriate direction that, you know, the board thinks? They, you know, that they can sell with the community, that the community will support. And I understand the whole tax question. And I'm asking it for, you know, myself because it's gonna impact me directly. I live in Danville. I pay school taxes, but. I'll do some, I'll do some checking around with some of my, you know, some of my financial sources. I'll try to get some. You know, back of the napkin kind of sense of, you know, what is it cost to borrow? Seventy million dollars. But I under, but understanding that, you know, that'll be based on whatever the interest rates are today, which will go up or down and. Uh, that's assuming that there's, you know, somebody doesn't come through with some. Uh, school aid to offset some of the costs and a whole bunch of other things, so. But, you know, I I'm not dismissing the question. It's a valid question. I'll I'll have some conversations. I know a couple of people I can talk to about this.
Yeah, I saw Molly first, then I saw Dave, then I saw Dave. So Molly?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and I could be wrong about this. I just don't know as if the community is. Going to be very divided on these options and if I don't think they're. What can I word this? Um. I don't know is as if it's as difficult as we may think it is, if that makes us make sense. Um.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying about that? I I they may come around, come together. I just, yeah, I don't know. I don't know if we just jump on a, jump on an option. Get not get to one option and get a price and I don't know, but I hear you, Mark, on that where that's gonna be the number that sticks. But maybe you go with a high number and then you can say, let's, we can go with this reduced plan two and reduce it if that's a problem. I don't know. What the best plan is, but.
Dave told.
Um, so Dan Danville's share is not seventy million dollars. I think we need to start talking about. If Dan will share is maybe thirty two, thirty two million. That.
Well, the share for residential taxpayers is not seventy million. So you can think of it in terms of being broken up into three chunks. We talked about this a couple of months ago, I think it was, you know, in FY twenty three, how what percentage of the budget?
Here, this is one of the back of a napkin. We just went right to the back of a napkin. And let's not go to the back of a napkin. Uh, Dave.
My, I'm just gonna make a similar comment about like, let's. What I heard from those, from that meeting is not necessarily. People being very tied to an option or people being very divided. It was people. Appreciating all three options that were presented as having their individual strengths. But also that same question about tax impact, even if there's a range, but I think that, you know, to Dave Toll's point, that's important to. Get out to people that like, you know, the more we say borrowing seventy million dollars, the more. We're talking ourselves into something that might not exist. Like, I think people really, what 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 strikes me is that the. Impact to residential taxpayers is what's most important for people to even be able to sort of wrap their minds around those three options. Thank you.
I think it's right, Rob.
I have a, I had a five or two old graduates. Um, that um, that I got to enter the tour. I was saying, oh, this is a big job. We should just add on a little bit.
Sure.
And um. But I I and I said, we've got to do option three. Because if we add on and we, you know, we have all these. The structures that exist that are very constraining for our programs. And that won't work in the future, even if you design the best you can. You you can design with the existing structure. It will not be the best result for the future for our kids, so. That is that.
I definitely tend to approve. Um, if no one, does anybody else from the Sarah Walsh? Sorry.
Um, I was just gonna, I had kind of had had my hand up right after or right before Dave said it, but it was gonna say the same thing that he said that. You know, I I very much understand that estimates are the number and the number you threw out and that's what we. Stood fast behind before throwing out the number for the overall building project. Um. But I think. These are very big numbers and it's hard to comprehend what that's gonna impact the taxes and I think um. One of the things I heard last night is that people feel that it's going to have. Some people felt that it's gonna have a big impact and some people don't know and so helping to provide those. Estimates. And being very clear that they're estimates based on, you know, X date. Um, I I do think that that will will help many, um, many, not just the people that have attended the two community nights either.
Um, Clayton, somebody, Chelsea, you had posted something in the Q and A said.
We're not, Mark, yeah, we're not yet to the public, Mark. So I was gonna.
Okay.
Use that to pave my way and opening up the public.
Okay.
If everybody's done, uh, so I'm about.
So option, option three is seventy one point three million.
Option three is an as yet unknown number that could, it could be any number between potentially seventy million and eighty million dollars, but we don't know the answer to it because it hasn't been drawn up yet. Option one is seventy one point three million dollars with four point eight million dollars set aside for contingency. So but option three is not yet drawn and the only, the the benefit would be that all of the money goes towards building a new school and none of it goes towards. Putting you back together fifteen or sixteen times alone. That's my understanding.
What, why can't we get a estimation on a two hundred thousand dollar house for the next? You know. For the next however many years at. Seventy million dollars. Or seventy five million dollars. I you gotta, you gotta pick something just like my taxes are gonna go up a hundred and twenty dollars a year. You know, for the next, or is it gonna go up? It's it's gonna go up three thousand dollars a year. You know, I don't know, you know, if if people know, throw a number out there and it's just like you can. You know, we, you can assume that your taxes are gonna go up between a hundred and twenty to three hundred dollars. A year, every year and that at last, I'm I'm sorry, at the very least, that will. Uh, you'll get support for having a brand new school, I think personally, I think if I know it's not gonna be a complete tragedy. And and um. Come to pay taxes that you'll get support just based upon. I'm willing to pay Mike Bear's share. I'm not gonna pay three thousand dollars extra. I know, I know that's extreme, but.
Yeah, I agree with.
If we can pick a number seventy five million.
Yeah.
Which is seven point one three plus your four million and.
So what, do you think that's something that's feasible?
Do you? I, while while everybody was talking, I sent a couple of emails out to some people, so I will. I'll have some, I'll have some conversations with my sources almost.
Okay, so we may, we may.
This is not, Danville's not the first community that's tried to do this, so there's a lot of collective. Knowledge out there. I'll, I've got some sources, so I'll work on that.
It's the back of a very elegant napkin, but still. Okay, now I'm gonna open up to the public if everybody's satisfied and the first thing I see from the public is a a video chat from Chelsea Hewitt that says. Can you do a video tour and post on the website? And so in answer to that, I'm gonna send that question to Mark and I'm gonna say, can we get Cam Featherson off back here to play Mr. Wizard? And walk us, walk a video monitor through the building and do the same tour that he did. Because it was very, it was very effective, but it it really requires Cam to do what I think. Is that something that we can spend our money on? A couple, maybe if we get, if we could hastily arrange a third tour on graduation night or. Eighth grade graduation night, because I know nobody's busy. I know nobody's busy on those nights and then maybe we'll, um. I don't know, maybe we can, somebody can lay out a spread, you know, a bunch of stuff like that, make it easier for people to show up. But so if 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 that's a possibility before the end of the year, that might be helpful and Chelsea, thank you for the suggestion.
My, my concern is if you're giving the blueprint, a walking tour to anybody that wants to see it.
Are you talking about from a safety standpoint?
On a safety standpoint.
Yeah, I I see that.
You don't want to give. Bad person.
Yeah.
A complete blueprint layout of what we got here.
I think.
That would be my concern.
I I think that's valid, but I also think it could be done in a way that just highlights the rooms and, you know, be disjointed enough that you're not like, oh, in this particular. I think you could probably. Do that both ways.
I mean, you could.
I'm a little busy on graduation.
Yeah, I think it's a little busy, so.
Yeah, you think it can be done safely.
I think it can be done safely, I do.
Okay, and so now I'm open to the public. Anybody, if you, if you're an attendee and you have something, Kristen Francis got her hand up, uh, I'll have somebody raise you to the level of.
No, she can, she, yeah, she's, she can talk.
Hi, guys.
Yep.
Chris.
Hi, everybody. Um.
Oh, Kristen, can you identify, go ahead and identify yourself with your full name and where you're from?
Sure. My name's Kristen Franzen. I'm from Danville. I'm a current resident and grew up in this town and attended Danville School. Um, but I just wanted to to quickly say thank you so much for you guys for putting these events on. I went last night and it was really helpful. I got a lot out of it. And I appreciate you taking the time to do that in addition to these meetings. Um, I did want to just, we're talking about trying to come up with an estimate for tax rate increases. And I'm just, I'm curious if there's a way that we could, you know, to. Get some type of number based on the estimate, say, you know, kind of like what Sarah was saying, this estimate is based on seventy million dollars. At this rate and you're going to see your taxes increased by this amount for every. Million dollars that goes into this or something like that. So we just get some type of equation that we can work out on our own too and then we can use moving forward as the rate changes. We can say, okay, well, you know, if we go with option four and it's an extra six million, we know that the tax rate will increase by X amount of. Change or pennies. Does that make sense? Next.
Yeah.
That's kind of what we're looking for, but that's also, again, we're back to back to now. And so I'm somewhere, we're somewhere in, we're somewhere in between there, trying to figure out what the tax impact is without throwing a bunch of numbers out there that people can misconstrue.
Right, that's what. Did it in the way of an equation and just said generally, you know, or historically, every thousand dollars we put into this, your tax rate's gonna increase by a penny, for example. And I I don't think people. I don't think people are really looking for solid numbers at this point. I think we just want a ballpark figure where we can say, okay, and then rationalize it in our brains. So I just, I hate to hear you guys putting that much pressure on yourself to come up with an exact number. If um you could come up with something that would really give people what they're looking for. Might be easier.
Thank you, Kristen.
That's all.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Yep.
So I don't see anybody else with a public with their hand up. Um, yes, Allison?
I have something unless someone else on.
So you're on, you're.
Okay, so Allison does that. She also a Danville resident and um. I wasn't able to make the meetings unfortunately. I was hoping to, but work wise, I wasn't able to do it, but I did look at the extensive report that Mr. Schilling had emailed to Lance Horn, which is really helpful. And gave me an idea of where you guys are coming from, what's really going on. So that was awesome to see. And so I see more of obviously where you're landing in this position and why you're trying to, you know, decide how to move forward. Um, one of the things I'm wondering about, since we can't get a clear number on estimates, et cetera, is there a way to get a clear number on any sort of? Grants funding outside of taxpayers? Can that be clarified so people can say at least this much will go to the proposal? So I don't know if that's something. That could help potentially. I don't know where that money's coming from, how that's happening. I know there's restrictions in ARPA funding. ARPA funding probably can't be used for this.
This is an ARPA.
And not at all, okay. So I didn't think so. Um, so anyway, I was wondering from the flip side on the benefit piece and then. Um, the grants, the funding otherwise outside of taxpayer money. um, the grants, the funding otherwise outside of taxpayer money, um, if that could be solidified for people to know. And then the other thing that I'm really wondering about is um, I missed those tours unfortunately, and it seems like the conversation came up with regards to now potentially closing the high school. And I don't know, or people saying, throwing that around as an idea, and I just have to say, I remember going through that and initially I was totally for, okay, choice, do the whole thing, and after miles now going through the high school, I would say, absolutely not. We have to keep Danville School here, it has such, so much amazing things, offers such good faculty, incredible faculty. What Schilling is talking, sorry, I just hear the kids always call you that. But Mr. Schilling is talking about with regards to the um trades and all the plans that were in place for that, it just makes a lot of sense. And so I would hope that that's not a real consideration on the table, I don't know where that's coming from, I just missed it because I wasn't able to make the meeting. So I'm looking maybe for guidance as to where I could find, if that's a real reality.
So what what I'll say is, thank you for the questions, and we're simply addressing people's concerns. Simply, when you ask the questions about.
Nothing in place that I.
No, there's nothing in place about, when you ask the questions about what kind of piping we were gonna use, we tried to address those concerns, this came up, we're trying to address those concerns. So we, we wanna listen to people and then and then address their concerns.
Okay, perfect, and then so my other concern is just on that benefit, if you don't mind, is um, I'm just curious if it's been put together in any of the design, will the wifi be, uh, these are just questions.
Your way, premature precision, your premature position, and we talked about not doing that one. Where the wifi, that's way, way, way down the road.
Okay, so will, there'll be opportunity to get there?
There'll be opportunity to ask that question.
Okay.
In maybe eight months.
Okay.
That's a, that's a, that's a more relevant question, eight months.
That's good, as long as there'll be time in the sort of planning.
We come here every Tuesday, every second Tuesday forever.
Okay, perfect.
All right, I got another hand up, so I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on. I don't know if I have John or Dolores Blackmore, but if you could move them forward, thanks.
Yes.
Uh, the second. Okay, you should be able to talk, John Adores Blackmore.
There you go.
Troy now.
Uh Dolores Blackmore speaking.
Okay.
You're from Danville, Dolores, you gotta tell me that.
I, oh, yes, sorry, I am from Danville, I'm the mother of a grandmother of a kindergarten student. I'm the mother of two students who graduated from Danville School, I'm the stepmother of two students who graduated from Danville School. And I'm just calling in or or checking in to say, my feeling is that we need to keep our high school students in Danville because there is value for those students who, whether it's from sports or other academic things that need Danville School. And I am advocating for a new school. And I would look for getting information on the cost of a new school because I think anything we do to the old school is gonna be a Band-Aid. That is gonna have to be revisited down the road. So as as a parent, grandparent, that's the information that I would like to find. What is it gonna cost and what is the uh, the the work involved with getting a new school? For Danville and keeping the high school as is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can you say it?
So.
And I believe it was only a single individual who brought up last night about the high school. Right? Yeah, it was just an individual.
So I've had, I've had the conversations, and what I've said to every one of those people is closing is not an option. We run a high school in this town, and so that is, that, that's my, that's my personal position, so I'm a business chair of the board, it's my position as a person who lives in Danville. We run a high school in this town, and the people that live at this town, we're gonna continue to run a high school, we want a healthy high school. So my position as a person is that closing is not an option. And, but I wanna be able to say to those people, and then here are the numbers, as opposed to me saying to those people, let me tell you X, Y, and Z. But in my opinion, closing is not an option, closing is not a viable option, it's not a good option for the kids, and it, and and when you talk about school choice, that absolutely destroys choice for students, you either go to this private school or that private school. So that's my, that's my personal opinion on that, that's not, that, that, I don't, I don't hold the opinion of the board, I'm not strung over, I don't know anything about that. That's just where we are on that, but I I just need the numbers, I need to know what what I'm, what I'm talking about, what we're talking. Mark.
I did wanna say in response to that, um, in every conversation I've had, it has come up, so that's something where, that's, you know, whatever our personal opinions are, it's just to make sure everybody feels heard and that's, but yeah, so that was only one person last night, but I have heard it through several different conversations I've had that it's come up, so.
Good to know.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think it looks like we're done with this one, um, for now, is you need no more hands and no more whatever, I'm gonna pull it back up to board level here, and I'm gonna move on with board business. And I wanna talk about establishing a facility committee with the initial assignment of members. And I think I'm gonna start with Mark here, because this was, Mark, is this, am I starting with you or are you starting with me?
Um, I don't have the, I don't, there, there are a couple of lists that were floating around. Uh, I know that there are some people that have spoken up, one of our attendees tonight. Said she wants to make sure that her husband gets on the committee, I believe her husband or partner, whatever. Is it, is it Eric Hewitt, is that Chelsea's?
Um, yes.
So I think I, what I wanna say about the committee, the when this board forms a committee and you should form a committee, it takes an action of the board to do that, and once you do that, you're creating a committee that falls under the public, all the public meeting requirements, so they have warm meetings, they have minutes, et cetera, et cetera. They can set their own agendas and their own schedules for meeting, take direction from the, from the full board uh to guide their work. We had a somewhat of a, I didn't, I don't know that I have it handy, the list of people that I at one point suggested some people that should be on the committee or had expressed an interest to be on the committee. I think because it's a, gonna be a board committee, you can have as many board members involved as want to be involved in it. Um, there should be people from the administration, there should be lots of people from the community. I know Rob Valvet's interested in participating, um, I don't know.
Right, you're on it, Rob, I haven't, we haven't formed it yet, but you're on.
Um, Eric Hewitt, who I don't know, but if he, if he's uh, if it's okay that his wife is speaking up for him, I think that's great. Um, I don't know who else, um, I don't know who else you wanna put on the committee.
Um, well, I have three names of people who are not here tonight who've expressed interest, Eric Hewitt is one of them. Uh, Bruce Muloney is a second one, and Jonathan Austin Short, the third. That's my guy. So we, uh, Mark, I mean, you talked about this briefly, uh, so one of the things that you said was lean, you you said that it was ideal. And I, that you, that you wanted to, maybe to start off with a limited number of people on the committees, just so that you could make sure people could make the meetings. And.
Well, um. Here, here's, here's my experience with committees, okay? Uh, the larger they are, the more unwieldy they become, unless you set a ground rule within the committee that says, you know, if if you try to run a committee that says everybody on the committee has to be there every time, then you're not gonna get it, make any forward progress. So I think in terms of a core group of people who are are sure that they could dedicate time as frequently as it's going to need to be done. Uh, and then certainly other people can participate and people can come in and join after the fact. People, and it will be public meetings, so people can come in um to those meetings and discuss with the facility committee the work that the facility committee is doing, so it's, so it's not like you're gonna, like you form a committee tonight and 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 they're, it's not like getting married, you know, forever, you know, shall you not part? I mean, the committee can fluctuate size-wise and participant-wise, but I would say, start with a core group of people who are, have expressed a strong inter-interest to participate, and then get that committee to work, have that committee call its first meeting, organize itself, it's just like, it, it's just like organizing the board, they need a committee chair, they need, you know, somebody to do minutes and all that other stuff, so. You could have thirty people on the committee, but the work won't go.
One more question, um, was there a constraint on how many of the board members can be on the committee?
Um, no, because it's a, it's a subcommittee of the board, and it falls under the public record, uh, public meeting rules anyway, and so the, the, that committee will have to uh warn all of its meetings and take minutes and publish minutes and all that, so there's no limit.
So I think we get more than two, I think that was, I think that's my question, can we have more than two? And um, so Dave told, just handed me the list, and he had um at the, the list of people that were suggested, and Rob was mentioned, admin, superintendents, principals, our current facilities director, Sean McNamara, at least one classroom teacher, special educators, if we can get them. Parents, school board members, the athletic director, and community members.
An alumni.
Alumni, sure.
Thank you, that's a list that I had seen earlier that I couldn't put my fingers on right now, yeah.
Now, dude, now, I don't know the um, how we're gonna go, how this is, do we have to nominate each and every individual person? Or can we form a committee and um, and then have the, have the committee be active to add members on its own? Can you give us a little guidance there?
I think you can do that, I think you can do that, I think you have to constitute a committee and and set some uh basic membership, and then you, one of the things that you can delegate to that committee is the authority to set its own um, you know, memberships and uh and manage its own membership as it, as it goes along.
Okay, so, does the board understand what we're doing here? Tell me in the ear. So we are going to form a committee, we're gonna form a committee to discuss the construction project on this school. And we are going to name, I think what we should do here is first, we should name a couple of board members and a couple of administrators to be on this board, and then we'll go from there, and then we can have that, that committee meet. I guess we could name some of these core community members if if we'd like to, cause I've got some willing volunteers now that I wouldn't wanna. So, so let's start, so the first thing that I need to do is, I need, I need, I I'm looking for, I I'm probably gonna be looking for a motion here from somebody. If we understand, and my motion is gonna be specifically regarding establishing a facility committee to um shouldn't, shouldn't be more than that, right, is that enough? I don't have to talk about what it's about.
Facility committee to study the proposed renovation project of Danville School under the direction of the full board.
Okay, I got.
I'm gonna write this down.
Okay, so we're gonna go again for Molly.
Hold on a second.
We're gonna go again for the.
I'll make a motion that we establish a facility committee
for the purpose.
For the purpose of the
of investor, of investigator.
Studying the school renovation project.
The school renovation project.
Thank you. It should be good. Let's call him with a second. All right, so now um we'll have a discussion again, this, this discussion can be either board level or community level, I'm see, does the community have any questions about the committee?
Sorry, Clayton, did you do a vote for all of us?
Not yet. Before we vote, I'm, I'm checking with the community one last time, even though it's a bit open to the community, before we vote. Hearing no, nothing from anyone further, I'm gonna call for a vote on that motion, all in favor of that motion, please say aye. That's three, I'm for, the ayes have it, we now have a building facilities committee. And so what I'm gonna do now is I'm going to close that bit of business. Wait, I guess I'm not, I guess I got, I guess I gotta name some members, so it's not listed here as part of the action, but we'll assume as part of the action, that we understand this.
It's part of establishing.
It's part of establishing the committee, so in establishing the committee, I'm establishing a membership, and I'm looking for nominations of individuals to serve on the committee, and I'm looking for people that surreptitiously put their hand up and say they wanna be nominated amongst the board members. So Dave told nominates Rob Balavich. And I'm looking for a second on Rob Balavich.
A second, Rob.
Okay, and um anybody, any concerns about Rob Balavich? I don't, uh, so I'll call the question on Rob, can Rob please be on the committee? All in favor, say aye. Okay, I'm looking for additional nominations to the committee. I'm happy to be on the committee, it helps.
Clayton, move to nominate Clayton for the.
Nomination for me on the committee. All in favor of Clayton on the committee?
Aye.
That's two members, now let's hit a couple of the uh community members, Mark Tucker, you wanna be on the committee?
I, I would like to be on a, in an advisory role and not a voting role. Um, okay, because of my, because of my meeting schedule.
I think, he's not gonna attend as a committee member, he's gonna attend as an advisor.
Okay, so. Okay, so, so I wanna, I'll have a nomination for Mark Tucker in an advisory role to also run Zooms.
Yes.
So well. Hold, hold on a second, Clayton, hold on. The reason that I said I wanted to be on in an advisor role is because of my meeting schedule, and I know, do not want to be the impediment to the facility committee meeting, I don't know how often the committee's gonna wanna meet, but, you know, the, the the Monday and two, Monday and Tuesday of every week, I can't meet, so.
Okay.
I think that, I think that, Clayton, I think at this point, um, you get a couple of board members to come on board and accept, and accept volunteers, some other, you know, other, you know, people who wanna serve on the committee and just form the committee. I think we're over, overthinking this process.
All right, so I'm gonna, so I think that's great, I've got willing volunteers, I'm gonna, I'm, somebody nominate John Blackmore for me real quick.
I'll nominate John Blackmore.
Let me get a second on John Blackmore. All in favor of John Blackmore. All right, go again, Eric Hewitt, I'm looking for nomination for Eric Hewitt.
So move.
Wait, 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 hold, slow down, everybody, Dave T nominated John Blackmore, who seconded John Blackmore? Okay. All right.
All in favor?
Who seconded um Eric? Or sorry, who, who moved Eric?
Did you want?
I'm moving ahead now. Think we're good.
One more, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put Jonathan Austin Short on lickety split, Jonathan Austin Short, I'm looking for nomination for Jonathan Austin Short.
So.
And a second. All in favor? And um, I think now I'm gonna stop the point on that one, I think.
So Clayton, the, the facilities committee reports to the full board and takes direction from the board, and so I would argue that the chair of the facility committee needs to be one of the board members who's, who's participating, that's a link back to the full board. So I don't know who else you have beside you on board members, I don't know. I kinda lost the names in there, if you, I don't know if you wrote.
So far, so far, there's me, there's Dave Toll, and those are the board members that are on at present.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, please.
Oh, I'm Abby Bartel from Danville, um, I just have a question, is it possible to have student representation?
I would love to have student representation, I would, I would be ecstatic if there's some kids sat with us and and told us what they thought and then took on the guidance, and I'm looking for, I'm looking for kids to be leaders, I'm looking for kids to sit down with us, that'd be great. Yeah, and Thomas, I ask you to also reach out to people. So I think that we are adequately staffed to to start, to form a committee and go, and then we'll see who else wants to add on after. Um, I'll send out um plaintive emails to Larry Kleigman, and after July the first, and see if he wants to join the committee. But as for now, he's unemployed and he does not resonate with Danville, so he wouldn't be, he wouldn't qualify. In the future, Larry, but right now you don't qualify, you don't meet the criteria. Okay, now, that's where we are now, I wanna, so we're gonna move forward and establish ground rules. And I didn't put this on the agenda, this came on the agenda from the superintendent, so again, I beseech the superintendent, tell me what this means.
Well, we talked about this, we talked about this at the last meeting, uh, ground rules that uh, the example came from CCSD, and there was some discussion about, a general discussion about, gee, these look good, and then my recollection was Tim said, well, wait a minute.
That's meeting, this is ground rules for the committee.
Oh.
That was Tim.
That's, that's, that, that's a meeting.
What's the, the first, first uh action of the committee is to come up with those and then present them to us.
I think that.
We're gonna let the committee establish their own ground rules, that includes, I guess, I think the one ground rule that we would wanna probably establish for this committee is that they are allowed to add members.
Yeah.
Without, without convening a full session of the board. So I would like, if somebody would make the motion to establish a single ground rule for this committee to get started, and the ground rule is that they can add members as they see fit, without having to reconvene the school board to um add those.
Should there be a. I would.
I would lay that to the discretion, the, to the discretion of the facility committee chair and the, and see how things go. Yeah, I think there's one other ground rule you should consider, Clayton.
Please.
And that's to be.
Okay.
And, and that's a, the facility. And that's, the facility committee does not have the authority to make decisions on behalf of the full board. They are recommending body to the full board, and they, they can vote within or on what they wanna say to the board, but they have to bring everything back to the board that requires formal action. Not of the sub, not of the subcommittee, but of, you know, the, the facilities committee is not empowered to go out and decide what the design for the, you know, what the decision is on the, on the renovation option. That has to come back to the board.
Okay.
Hi, and perhaps it would be good if we had the goals and objectives of the committee defined.
Okay, do you want? Do you think we should define those here? Do you think this board should define those before they, before that, before the committee gets started, or do you think that the committee can define their own?
Defines. Our, our, uh, our
That seems like committee work. That seems more, okay, so that seems, that seems like once we convene the committee, we give them these two rules, then the committee says, our first order of business as this committee is to, and so we establish that agenda, and then the first, the first goal on this agenda is to figure out what to do. And to figure out who we report to, that's already been established, and then what are we trying to accomplish, and who are we saying it to? I think. Okay, so I think the first order of business on that committee meeting is to establish the ground rules of that committee.
They should probably elect a chair and place you.
Elect the chair and vice chair. Organize and then develop their own grounds. Okay. So, Clayton, sorry, real quick, before you move on from this whole piece, just because it's awkward sometimes with Zoom chat and getting names out there. But also, Katie White had chatted and offered to be a part of the committee. Naming introductory names over to throw Katie White's name out there as well. I'm looking for nomination. All in favor, Katie White, joining this committee? Take it. Thank you, Katie. She shows up to the committee. I don't wanna put people on there that aren't here that didn't stay right in my face. Yeah, yeah, she shows up and we go. Okay, so what I'm looking for now, where we're gonna go now to get this one done, is we're gonna establish two ground rules for this committee. And the first ground rule was that this committee is allowed to add members to its committee without reconvening with Danville Board, but I can't make that motion. That's the motion that was made by Dave Toll. Good, take a second from Melissa. Anybody, either board or public, have a question about that one before I go forward? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of that ground rule being laid upon this committee? Say aye. Ground rule number two that I'd like to discuss again, and Mark, Mark just probably laid it out more eloquently than I will here, is that the, the facility committee that we are empowered, that we are handling, we are not empowering to take actions upon behalf of the board. Let me get that.
Including including press releases and anything like that. We would just wanna be very specified that you know, discussion outside the committee, uh, cuz there's a lot of foxes that, you, you don't want press releases on, on what the subcommittee's doing. Anything like that, or any public statements or something like that should be done by the board.
Yeah, the role of any subcommittee is to report back to the board on its work and take, ask for further guidance and advice if needed. So. I agree with Dave.
Okay, so the role, so we're establishing that we're impaneling the subcommittee to discuss and to investigate the options regarding the renovation expansion project of the school, but we're not empowering them to act, and we are specifically empowering them only to report back to the board and not make press releases.
Or any, any discussion outside of the committee. Is that right? You said it best.
Well, well, so here, so here, the, here's the thing, they're gonna be conducting public meetings. So you're not gonna be able to control what anybody says, you know, you could have, you're gonna be open, meeting in the open, and the, let's just say the Cal Rec could come to everyone in the meetings and report on everything that was said there. So you're not gonna be able to control the information coming out of that committee, uh, that goes out into the public. It's not, you know, it's an open meeting. So, um, I think if you leave it at, uh, the responsibility of the committee to, the committee does not have decision-making authority on behalf of the larger board, and all decisions have to be referred back to the larger board. And just leave it at that. I think that will cover the bases. It'll be clear that they're not, um, that they're doing, the subcommittee is doing work on behalf of the larger board, but not in, instead of the larger board.
So the committee does not have decision-making authority, but reports back to the Danville School.
Right.
That's it. Okay, so that's our motion, if anybody is willing to make it. There. Looking for a second now. Okay, so I got a motion, I got a second, and I think that we have that one pretty well hammered out. Any discussion from anybody, board of public, so pardon me one? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Um, do we agree that that is a ground rule for this committee?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Me as well, that's four. Okay, and I think that's where we are with the committee. We have established ground rules for the committee. Okay, now, I'm gonna move on. And so for the next, the next item that we have on the agenda is establishing meeting norms. And I spoke to Tim, and I'm interested in Tim's input on this one specifically, and what I'd like to do is table this until Tim is here. Tim had some opinions, and I'd love to table it, please. And I get a motion to table that. I'm just gonna do it. It's on the table.
Make a motion to table.
Need special. All in favor? Next meeting, whenever that happens, which we'll get to in a minute. So we're gonna move on from that to public comment protocols. And we've discussed public comment protocols. In the packet, you will see that, um, I had my proposal on what to add to public comments, and the, and again, the, the, the meaning of this is to keep our discussion in Danville, at Danville Board meetings solely among the stakeholders of Danville and the community. So I laid forward a public comment, a, a public comment protocol, or the public comment guidelines, that I'd like to appear on the agendas, and that then I will read as of, and it's, it's long and boring, but I'll read it before people start, so that we don't have outside agitators come in and cause trouble on our boards, or ask us for help in situations where we cannot ask us to do governance in places we don't govern. And so, um, I don't know if that can go up on, on a shared screen real quick from somebody, so that the rest of the public can see it. Screen shares.
I, I don't have it. Is it in the packet?
In the packet. It's in the packet.
Alright, okay.
I get to say that to you finally, to the packet. It's the last page of the packet. I can read it out loud if it helps, cuz I'm gonna have to read it out loud anyway. So I'm gonna do that when it says it's
Before you start, I would really like, um, Tim had some good opinions about, um, this, and, and I'm thinking maybe that should be tabled till Tim's at the meeting too. So it's a full board.
I spoke to him, he's like, oh, so. That's why I tabled the other one, not this one. And I'm happy to table this one as well, if, um, if you wanna wait for Tim. I have a suggestion to table this, to wait for Tim. Is when the table is removed for
This is what you're talking about.
That's the one. That's the public, that, that, that's the public comment guidelines. If I, if I read through this now, we can wait and hit a yes or no vote at the next meeting if you'd like. So the public comment, and so a public comment, before I would allow any public comment on the purpose of this agenda item, and that's specifically the public comment item, is to provide the general public with an opportunity to address the board on any matters not worn on the agenda. Neither the board nor the administration will discuss the matter beyond determining any necessary steps, such as referring the matter to the appropriate individual group or offering a clarification. The board may decide to, to add raised, add items raised in public comment to a future agenda. Public input on non-agenda items at board meetings is limited to stakeholders. Danville School defines stakeholders as students, parents, teachers, and residents of Danville, Vermont. Non-stakeholder comments are welcome via email. They can email to the board chair at my email address there. Uh, public comment should be directed at the chair, limited to only three minutes. And I would say that every, every week, and I, or every month, and I would say that every month, so that it became normal, and that would be the idea, and so.
It should include taxpayers. You have residents, but you don't have to.
See, if you're a non-taxpay resident. So I'll take the suggestion.
You can't limit it to taxpayers.
No, 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 to, to include, because you have students and
He's, he wants me to define the stakeholders to that degree, to include stakeholders, to include taxpayers. I can do that.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so I'll work that back up, and then we'll talk about this at the next meeting.
Got one more quick suggestion.
Please.
And this is a public hand up. Um, I would consider changing the word teachers to staff.
Great, that's great. Yep, I understand, I understand that, and then that's good. And then, so to the public, I see there's a hand up, and it's Simon Fisher. Can Simon Fisher be allowed to talk, please? And then, but you gotta tell me you're Simon Fisher, Simon Fisher.
Hi, Simon Fisher, uh, school counselor for the high school at Danville School. Dave Schilling just addressed the thing I had my hand up about, changing teachers to include other staff and faculty, so I have no further comment.
Right, I apologize for even not thinking of that myself. I'm glad I know you're Simon to read your mind by now, which is exactly why I said it. Okay, awesome. Okay, so what we're gonna do now is we're gonna move on from that. And we're moving on to new hires, and new hires went on the agenda in the hopes that there were some. We had one early, we had a special meeting, we had a new hire. I don't know if we have any new hires, uh, Mr. Tucker.
We do not.
Let's hope we get some new hires. Okay, and so if we get some new hires, um, our next, we're gonna talk about our next meeting in a minute, but in the meantime, if we get some new hires between now and when we meet next, instead of having to meet again in a hurry, we'd like to talk about, um, extending to the superintendent summer hiring authority. To, to the two new members, um, the superintendent, as we discussed at the meeting that we had on May the sixth, the superintendent recommends the board approves hires. And so in this case, what we would be saying is the superintendent, upon his own recommendation, can then make a hire because we have issued him that authority in the summer, because, because we're not meeting, and also because in the summer now, we're hasty, we're looking for teachers, and we're looking for the best options, and we can't follow. And then, if that's the case, then he reports back to us, I have made a hire for this open position at the next board meeting as part of support. Or possibly in a separate email, more than likely in a separate email. So that is something that has traditionally been done. The one year we didn't do it was the first year of the pandemic, because we were meeting pretty often via Zoom, and there was no physical presence at all that was necessary. Now, in a school board meeting, there is a physical presence that is recommended by the VSPA, if it's not, even if it's not statutory, it's recommended to have a chance for the public to come and speak. So it would be, it would be more difficult in the summer to get somebody in the building to run the Zooms. And so it is more than, it's definitely warranted to grant the superintendent summer hiring authority to be, to make these hires expeditious. Does anybody have anything to say?
We, we should probably include a date. That way it's more you know, I don't wanna say, uh, until the first school board meeting in September. It should just be, you know, we should give, we should be able to give a date, and between now and then, just give, you know, I'm all supportive, giving them authority to, the hiring authority, but.
Okay, so. Alright.
September.
So yeah, is our first meeting in the sixth of September, so if we define the date until the sixth of September, then that, that allows us, cuz we're gonna have some, we're gonna do some monkeying with the meeting times here in just a second. That allows us plenty of flexibility to get these hires done, if we can get them done. And so I agree with that. Molly or Melissa, do you have anything to add? Alright, so, given where we're sitting right now, I'm looking for a motion to that.
Make a motion to give Mark hiring authority through September sixth.
Okay, so we're hiring authority through September the sixth. I have a motion on the table. Second, alright, um. Anybody have any questions here in the public, in the public, raise your hand. We can clarify. Seeing no hands, seeing no hands in the room, I'll call the question. All in favor of giving the superintendent summer hiring authority through September the sixth, please say aye. Aye as well. Superintendent has summer hiring authority. And that's great. Uh, the next one, I don't have, the next one is a seventy fund request, and we went over the seventy fund, um, in the last session, and this is usually field maintenance. I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Schilling for a second, and he's gonna know what it is.
Yep, um, this is a request that came in from, um, with Randy Rathburn and Marvin Pritchard. It is a request for, um, aluminum benches with backrests to eight foot to fifteen feet, um, assembled and delivered from Diamond Turf. I asked Marvin for some clarification on why we needed these, cuz it's always good to know before. But they are doing is they are, it's, it's a part of a planned replacement of the old wooden benches that are under the, um, I think under the far dugouts on this school field. Basically, they're replacing old wooden, rotting, rotting out dugout.
When you say the school field, you mean the, the big school field, the town, the town field or this?
I, I'm pretty sure I mean the field with the, um,
The new dugout? Okay, so the soccer, the soccer dugout.
Yep, yeah, basically, what Marvin said is over the next couple of years, they're replacing all of the old wood benches with aluminum benches. Not heavy.
It's the, um, soccer dugouts on the field that out here.
Correct. It might also be the town field. It's two eight foot and two fifteen foot assembled and delivered aluminum benches. And going back to Marvin Pritchard's clarification, he says part of a multi-year replacement plan to phase out the old heavy wooden benches while that for more flexibility and multi-use.
Okay, um, can you give us a cost? Are there cost numbers on that?
I sure can. The cost is three thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Do you have something that you could put on the screen for the symbol public?
I do.
We have that somewhere, Dave. An email.
Molly, I can forward that to you if you want it.
Okay, thank you.
As a meeting document.
It is, um, doing the thing where you can't share your screen while you, give me a second.
I can see it.
We could see it, yeah.
Y'all could see it. Okay, we just couldn't see it here on our screen.
Alright. They can see it. Okay, as long as you, you can see it, and so we have it here. You have that up, so this is, it's, this is, this is a cost estimate of two aluminum backs, backrest, two eight footers, two fifteen footers assembled and delivered for the price of three nine eight seven fifty. For that.
I'll make a motion that we grant the seventy request in a sum of no more than three thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Or right, for the two eight foot backrests for the soccer field.
And two fifty for backrests.
And the two fifty foot backrests.
Okay, great. I gotta, I have, I have a motion, I have a second, and on this one to the assembled public, this money is part of a trust that comes in, and this money is dedicated specifically to this purpose. So I won't be seeking any public comment on this motion before acting, and as such, we're gonna act. Um, I'm looking for a vote on this motion. All in. And I as well, yeah, I have it. And that's that. Okay, other business. Do I have any other business that I don't know about? You missed your window there, if you had some other business. Hey, I'm gonna move on to public input, and so anybody from the public has the input, uh, now's the time, if you're an attendee, raise your hand. As before, we've had the, obviously, we had wide open for some of the, the more hot button subjects, and since seeing no hands, I'm seeing no hands, I am moving on. Now, future agenda items and future agenda items and the next meeting date, so future agenda items, I'm gonna move back down meeting norms for Tim, and I'm gonna move back down my edited, um, public comment protocols. And then, uh, like I say, the hires will come in, um, I'm gonna continue to have the building project on. I'm gonna add under, um, other business, the building committee. And that's what I'm gonna have for future agenda items I know about. Does anybody else have any future agenda items, any board members or any administrators that they wanna discuss right now?
Clayton, even though we just gave Mark summer hiring authority, do you still want, I mean, you still need Like, and even though we just gave Mark summer hiring authority, do you still want, I mean, you still need notification of any new hires, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll want to be informed, I guess that's a separate question, I have some new hires, I'll put that, keep that. Yes, sir.
Well. What my, what my practice has always been is if I execute that authority, I notify the board in writing.
Yeah, you know, that's what I thought, you know, if I, you know, if I said writing this part of your report, and then it can be just part of your report that, that we have a hire, but we're.
I don't make it part of my superintendent report, because that goes to all the, all the boards. I would notify, I'd notify the affected board, so if I hire somebody under. Yeah.
Alright, so to clarify what we can anticipate, if there is in fact a hire made by the superintendent over the course of the summer, we will all be informed of that hire by the superintendent immediately upon his acting. And it won't need to be a, it won't need to be an agenda. Okay, great. Okay, so that's that, and I'll, we'll set that new agenda up for the next meeting, and I want to talk now about the next meeting date. Traditionally, in some years, when everything goes just ducky, there's no July meeting, there's no need for a July meeting. I've never sat on this board when everything's gone ducky, and I don't anticipate things are going to go ducky now. There is, there are some conflicts early, the August meeting that is scheduled is scheduled during the week when all three administrators, all four administrators that we have now are going to be at BPA functions, or is that correct?
Yes.
August second, so what we did last year and what might do us great efficacy this year is combine the meetings into a meeting in the middle of July, and I asked you guys to come in with some flexibility, and we're going to throw around some dates here and see if we can find a date that does, that allows Mark to be accessible as well. And so Mark, you're probably going to lead the charge on what dates you have available, and then we're going to be able to say yes or no to them sometime after your first of July.
Um. Let's see, um. I'm going to be out of state the week of the 11th and, and 18th, so. Tuesday the 20th.
Sorry, Mike.
Um. Shoot, I gotta, I gotta, the 27th or 28th of August? I'm sorry, July 27th or 28th of July.
Twenty eighth of July. Can you, so now, now I'm going to work, working from that to, to make sure we include the superintendent, how is everybody else's availability on Wednesday, the 27th of July or Thursday, the 28th of July? Did anybody have a conflict?
Larry, isn't that when you just told me you're out of the country?
Yeah, I'll be in Canada. That's our family vacation time.
Okay.
From the 21st on, until I go to BPA. Okay, so let me go backwards. Mark. So if we. So let's go back, let's go back to July the 5th, and let's just talk about July the 5th, which is our regularly scheduled board meeting. Does anybody have a conflict with July the 5th?
I'd have to go via Zoom, I can, I can do it, but it would be over Zoom.
Zoom attendance is attendance, I cannot stress that enough. So. The day after the fourth, but it's, it's a business day, so. Does anybody have a problem with July the 5th? Just going with July the 5th and then, and then seeing about skipping that August meeting in July. Gene, if we need another one? Anybody, everybody good? July the 5th it is. So we're going to, we're going to meet in our, we're going to have our next regularly scheduled meeting. And there we go, that's everything on the agenda, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. I got a motion from Melissa, can I get a second?
Second.
Take it, all in favor of adjourning, there's four of us. I as well, meeting adjourned, thank you everybody.